At eleven, I call this meeting of the Village of North Hudson regular board and trustee meeting to order. And I would ask the clerk if she will please take the role.
President Klein?
Yeah.
Just you, Brian Brooklyn?
Here.
Fortner? Should we call him president if he's not in the room?
Yeah, he's here.
Stanford is absent. Thomas is absent. Wecken?
Here.
And Zap.
Here.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting on May third. You have those minutes in front of you. Would I make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the May third board meeting.
Second. Thank you. Any comments, suggested corrections? Now's a good time. Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It's an opportunity, comments from the floor. Item number three, opportunity for the residents to make the board where topics, issues, opportunities not on today's agenda. You're all on the agenda. New business from the board or staff. I do have a couple of comments, a couple of things that I need to bring to your attention. And the first item is our bridge out here. It's not really our bridge, it's the bridge owned by the state. Several of our, or many of our residents got a flyer yesterday handed out by the Lundus personnel. It's the company that's actually working on that state bridge, indicating that the, they would begin pouring concrete at three o'clock, and then it went to four o'clock this morning. So I laid in bed listening for the beep 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 sound of the backup signal off the trucks and didn't hear it. Found out that they didn't do it. When I stopped and talked to Larry, Larry is the project manager, he indicated to me that the reason that it wasn't done had nothing to do with the heat, but had to do with the fact that it had two mechanical breakdowns. And by the time they were fixed, it was too late to pour the cement, and so that's going to be done tomorrow. He assured me that the job would be completed by June 17th. That's a week from this Friday. There's guardrail and asphalt installation that has to take place before or after the concrete dries enough, so that's what's holding things up. I also asked him about what a number of residents had talked to me about regarding the surface and the almost washboard effect. I was informed that the state has a new, I say state, the Department of Transportation has a new requirement for the surfaces of bridges to make them less slippery. I said, "I've lived here for 34 years, I never heard of anybody sliding on the bridge as they crossed it during the winter or the summer." And he said, "Yeah, that's true, we know that, but unfortunately, we have to abide by the state requirements, and so that's why it's rough and song." And then the other fellow chimed in and he said, "Yeah, but after a couple of winters, the snowplows will level it out, and you don't have anything to worry about."
No.
That's the status of the bridge. We have an opportunity for board members, you see this in your board packet, it's Emergency Training Incident Command System. It's on June 22nd, six to eight p.m. at the Government Center. There's a flyer in your packet, and I plan on going, and I would encourage as many of you as possible to go to that. The cover letter that came with it indicated that we need to know how to deal with emergencies, and we have seen our fair share, most recently in Minnesota and even areas here in Wisconsin, where we had to make sure that our Incident Command Center and our elected officials are on top of things.
Could I just, if anyone, if there's someone who would like to attend and has not confirmed that, would you please let me know, and I'll put you on the list, and then I could email it to her, if you haven't done that on your own?
Oh, okay.
When is it?
You should have also received it via email.
And it's in the back of your binder.
It's in the very back of the binder.
Okay. So, put me on that, I guess. My item number-
Yeah, me too.
I'd like to go as well.
Very good.
And me too.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna guess Darryl will be there also, but can't speak for him. Got an interesting letter from the United States Department of Commerce. It is from the Economics and Statistics Administration, also known as the U.S. Census Bureau. It's a cover letter to a document that says, that answers the question, "How do I access census information for my community?" And I've already talked to Becky about this. This is a flyer, I'm just holding it up for the camera, so you can see what this is all about. And I will tell you that I tried to follow these directions and tried to find North Hudson. I know we're in there. I finally gave up in frustration, perhaps in a week or two it might be a little easier to get to, but Becky is going to post this on our website. There are one, two, three, four, five, five different addresses on your email sites, or sites, websites that you can go to. Maybe you can figure it out better than me. My item number four is the Annual Water Quality Report from the Hudson Public Water Utility. It went to, it was a very personal letter, and I've now answered to the name Personal. My last name is Patron. So, I'm sure that you got this as well. Many people, when they see postal Patron, just discard things without even looking at them, but it is a very interesting document that says our water, basically, our water is safe to drink. I've asked Becky if she will post this on our website as well. That's all I have. But before I turn it over to the administrator and to the village clerk, something I've been a little remiss in my duties, I'd like to throw it out to any board members, if you have something you would like to contribute. Question, a comment, or an observation that's... No? Am I? Okay. Gloria, your turn.
Although the budget is on the agenda, I would just like to have the, well, the committee chairs that are here aware that the budget will be put on the standing committees going forward, and I will get packets out to, if I haven't already, to all the department heads, and they should start working on that with their next meetings.
If I can piggyback on that, I've been using the number 65,000 as the number of dollars that we will be looking for, for next year. Wrote a letter to the governor and copied Dean Hansen, or Dean, where did that come from? Dean Knudsen and Sheila Harzendorf, and today I got a very nice letter back from Dean. This is all still up in the air. If the recommendations go according to what Dean would like to see, we'd only be looking at $25,000 next year, so perhaps we have something to celebrate. The point is, and I hope the department heads appreciate this, that's still a lot of money to find, and we'll be going through that budget with the proverbial finer, finest-tooth comb we can find. Back to you, Gloria.
I'm done.
Just budget?
Yeah.
All right. Becky?
Couple of things. We are still waiting for more details from the Government Accountability Board, but at this time, we believe that there will be a recall election taking place here in the Village of North Hudson on July 12th. We're still unclear as to whether or not that will be a primary or the actual election, so we'll try to keep everybody updated. I'm sure the newspaper will be doing the same, but we'll have some information posted on our website as we get more information on absentee voting. And the other thing is, is that the voter ID bill has now passed through the state legislature. We're still learning about the rules regarding that, but I would advise all residents, when they come in to vote, to make sure that they bring a photo ID with them, would just make the process a little bit simpler. Second thing, comment for the board primarily, is that we will be having a special village board meeting on July 16th, and that will be at 6:00 p.m., which is just prior to the public welfare meeting, to consider a request for a conditional use permit.
That's the 16th?
Yes. July, I have July written on here, but I believe that would be-
June.
June 16th. Sorry about that, at 6:00 p.m. And then the last thing is, we had our initial meeting for the Board of Review just prior to the Finance Committee meeting tonight. We have scheduled some tentative dates, but are, they are subject to change. We believe that the roll will be available to view by July 12th. We would have the open book scheduled for sometime around July 26th, tentatively right now from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on July 26th, and then the actual Board of Review would take place from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on August 11th. So, that more information will be coming out in notices and, as well as on the website regarding those dates, when we get them firmed up.
If I can make one comment, if there's anybody on the Board of Review who hasn't had the training, even though we don't require it, it's probably a really good idea for any new members of the Board of Review to go through the training.
Okay, and just so that you know, four of the five members have received training this year, so we're current on our training. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm gonna move item number seven to the next topic, and item number seven is amended, class B, class B liquor license for extended premises for Cozy Corner, third annual grand opening. Anything that you would like to say regarding this? Okay.
I'll second.
Do you want to read the issue statement on that one?
Got an issue statement?
Yes, there is-
Suggested motion?
Suggested motion.
It's this one. Move that the class B slash B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Cozy Corner be temporarily amended for an event taking place on Saturday, June 18th, 2011, from 8:00 a.m. until 2:30 a.m. on Sunday, June 19th, 2011, with the following conditions. One, area outside of building to be completely enclosed with fence, and the extended premises accessed only from within the building. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for requested date and time. Four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot area is fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for banned music volume. Six, all outside music to end no later than 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Was that easy enough?
Yes.
Okay, back on, back on schedule here. The next item is just past the insert, and this has to do with consideration of a conveyance of land between adjoining parcels on Galahad Road North. And this is, we addressed this last meeting, and what is-
Actually, this is not the one that we considered last month, this is a-
You're right, that was 333, wasn't it?
Yep, which was the next agenda item.
And that's the next one. Oh yeah, there it is, okay.
I don't see the applicant or their surveyor here. Would you like me to just give you a brief, Kevin, maybe, do you want to? I don't know.
Sure. Yeah, I had the two mixed up. Basically, I believe you have a surveyor, yeah. So, this is basically along Galahad Road. They're looking at doing is, there's a certified survey map that was provided for you in your packet, just mainly reconfiguration of some lot lines. There was one piece of land that was acquired from East Bank Condominiums. There was basically an encroachment of the driveway to access lot number three, so they required additional piece of property there, and that's incorporated in this certified survey map. And, you know, like, like we've done before in the past, it's just a conveyance between adjoining, in this case, same owner, so it's just a reconfiguration of the lot lines. I mean, there's-
And does it meet all of our requirements and all the necessary lot sizes and everything else?
Yep, and Brian worked, and that's included in your packet.
I saw that.
Took a look, the zoning administrator, which takes a look at, you know, all the zoning requirements, you know, lot width, sizes, all those types of items, and according to his correspondence, he has no issues with it, so.
On the tables there in front of you is also a map showing what the initial, what the current layout is of the, of the lots that are owned by Mr. Steckler, just so you can kind of get a little bit of a snapshot of the before and after.
Would you like to give a little bit more clarification on why this happened?
Yeah, sure. Part of the reason was, was to deal with the encroachment issue, but also, apparently there are, there are three homes that are on the three lots there, and adjusting the lot lines would actually allow for each of the residences to be on its own lot. There were some issues where there may have been some encroachment of the, of the actual structures onto some of the, the lots that, that he owned, so it was all owned by the same person, but this will kind of just clean all that up and, and make the three lots a little, the lines a little bit more precise. Part of what may look a little bit different is that what, well, 311 Galahad, if you're looking at the, the map of what it currently looks like-
The shit.
It was, actually, has two pieces that are not-
They're moving a lot.
Adjacent to each other.
What?
Currently, the lot line runs right through the middle of that shit.
311 Galahad Road had two pieces, there were two pieces that were all part of 311 Galahad Road, same parcel number, but they didn't actually join each other, so he's taking that, that piece of 311 that is adjacent to Galahad Road, and he's going to add that to what are now going to be lots one and two. That's why it looks a little bit different.
So, he currently owns this entire park, all three lots?
Correct.
Are these rental, he rents these out?
I believe that's the case.
And I'm sure that if he ever wanted to sell them, he couldn't sell them because they were encroaching on the next parcel of buildings.
Could I move to, move approval of the application for a conveyance of land between adjoining property, oh, that's wrong. Where's the issue statement? Move approval for the application for a conveyance of land between adjoining properties for Joel Steckler at 311 slash 313 slash 315 Galahad Road North to adjust the lot lines and parcel numbers, 161 dash 1068 dash 70 dash 000 comma, 161 dash 1068 dash 80 dash 000 comma, and 161 dash 1068 dash 90 dash 000 with an access easement to parcel 161 dash 1068 dash 90 dash 000 in parentheses, lot three, as indicated on the certified survey map dated May 31st, 2011.
Second. Any further discussion? Be interested in how this ends up, if Mr. Steckler does sell off any one or all of these, the tax implications, the real estate tax implications on this. I'm not looking for an answer, I just, I throw that out. I look at the current status tax-wise, and then when it's broken up, will be very interesting that the tax assessor gets to work on this one. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now for the one at 333 Galahad. It's rare that we have two of these so similar.
Well, and they're very close together, actually.
Yes, they are.
Well, my name is Pat Schultz, and I'm the surveyor for Mr. Hammerstad, and I'm here with my tail between my legs because I made a mistake.
Is that the first one today, or?
Well, it's a serious one.
Okay.
I put, I, when I was here last month, I had the property line in the wrong place on the map. You can, you can still see where it was pretty much on the map that we have now, but what we did was slide it, slide it down 21 feet, slide it south. The configuration stays the same. Lot seven is a little bigger, and lot eight is a little smaller. Lot eight still meets the minimum width requirement, about 94, 94 and a half feet wide, still has the required square footage. But the reason, the reason for it is, and it was foolish the way I had it, because you couldn't, you couldn't walk around the house on the south side of the house without walking in the neighbor's yard because of shrubbery and planting, and, you know, that's, that's not a good thing.
So, this grayed area represents not only the dwelling, but also the shrubbery?
No, that's just the house.
That's the house.
That's just the house, yep.
So, you're saying the mistake you made was based on your judgment on where to place the new property line?
No, I misunderstood, I misunderstood the client, quite frankly. There was, there was previously, before I came, there was an old property line, and I thought it was to be just simply extended out to Galahad Road, but they had some other idea where it was supposed to be.
But we still meet all the zoning requirements with this?
The zoning administrator has reviewed it, and his statement is in here, and it does indicate, I thought it was in here.
I don't see Brian's letter.
It's on the backside of the issue statement, and it does indicate that the, all the requirements are met, the 13,000 square feet and the minimum lot width of 90 feet is still-
I'll move to, I'll move approval of the application for a conveyance of land between adjoining properties for Virgil and Constant Hammerstad at 33, 333 Galahad Road North to adjust the lot line separating parcels 161 dash 1065 dash 20 dash 000 and 161 dash 1065 dash 30 dash 000 by 21 feet to the south, as indicated on the certified survey map dated May 18th, 2011.
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor of the motion as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, folks. Item number eight, Chief Election Inspector Appointment. See the issue and the background on, in your book. Would someone like to make the motion?
Well, I would like to move to appoint Joe Lane, Mayor of 203 Meadow Drive North, as a chief election inspector representing the Republican Party for the remainder of the 2010, 2011 term.
All right. Any questions or comments? I think the background section is quite detailed. Anything you want to?
Well, I was just wondering if you wanted to announce, oh, never mind, that's me.
For me?
You mean, announce that the current chief election inspector, Marty, is moving out of the Village of North Hudson? Oh, we didn't need to mention that.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Um, the next item, number nine, has to do with the collection of fees in lieu of park lands. Gloria, do you want to talk about that one?
You should have an additional sheet of paper from Cedar Corp.
Okay.
That they've given us an estimate on what it would cost to have them draft a ordinance addressing the, the fees in lieu of park land, given us some base, some requirements or, or guidelines. Do you want to?
Sure. Just as you're aware, there has been a, a change in the parkland dedication requirements. They, they brought in the fee in lieu of, that was taken out, I think it was last year or a couple of years ago, and now they've reinstated that issue, so-
They meaning the state?
Yes.
The state legislatures?
Yep, state legislatures. So then, you can either do park dedication or fees in lieu of, have either or option. So what we've got in front of you is a proposal to kind of go through, relooking at, you know, what you had before, giving you some guidelines or some recommendations of what some of the other communities are, you know, what their fee structures are based on. City of Somerset's one that we just recently did some work with, came up with some recommend, recommendations that they, they approved, so we would be, you know, reviewing and recommending guidelines for determining fees in lieu of land, reviewing the descriptions of acceptable open space and public use areas, reviewing land dedication requirements, reviewing the Village of North Hudson's outdoor recreational slash park plan 2008, 2013, for information relating, related to fee recommendations and attending all meetings. I guess what we would do is obviously bring that in front of the, the planning commission, kind of work through that committee, hash all the issues out, and then bring that forth at the village board for approval.
Gloria, I didn't ask you at finance, but is this the final professional fees associated with this change?
Other than any prior legal fees, yes.
So, be, okay. I'll move to approve the allocation of $1,250 to cover the cost of amending the chapter 86, section 137 regarding fees in lieu of park lands of the village code.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Anything to add? This is a spending issue, so I will ask for a roll call vote. Want to start us off, Stan?
Uh, yes.
Klein, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we go on to number 10, Gloria, would you like to just make a comment about that letterhead? You probably noticed something different regard, on this ordinance 3 dash 2011.
Like a picture of Roberts.
(laughing).
You're doing just fine.
Okay. Well, I thought you might want to mention who created that for us.
Yep, you're doing just fine.
Cheryl Schmidt, our, our deputy treasurer came up with this, and I like it, all right. Okay, now, we have, this is an annual occurrence, item number 10. This is, as it says on your agenda, class A, B, alcohol beverage licenses, cigarette licenses, and amusement permits, and this is for the year, so as I said, this is an annual occurrence. And you'll notice that there are one, two, three, four, five, is there any more of those? Yeah, there are five of these, so if somebody wants to start, we can have, we'll have five separate motions. And who wants to start over the first one?
I'm good to go.
Go ahead, Stan.
Motion to approve the class A fermented malt beverage and class A intoxicating liquor lic- Motion to approve the class A fermented malt beverage and class A intoxicating liquor license for the village liquor store Kimberly White agent with the effective date in July one, two thousand and eleven through June thirty, two thousand and twelve, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion that Stan read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Mark, going to read the next one?
Alcohol, alcohol beverage license renewal, class A beer only, motion to approve the class A fermented malt beverage license for Freedom Value Center, Inc., Paul Kirk agent with an effective date of July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations of village being satisfied.
Second.
Any questions or comments, discussion? All in favor of the motion Mark read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. All right, Colleen, you get the long one. If you don't, if you don't mind.
Alcohol beverage license renewals for class B slash class B. Motion to approve the class B fermented malt beverages and class B intoxicating liquor license with an effective date of July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve for LDJT, Inc., DBA, the village inn, Lee Helverson agent. Malaloo, Inc., DBA, Malaloo Inn, Peggy Multer agent. Stars Bar, Inc., DBA, Stars Bar, William Souter agent. Zaner, Inc., DBA, Cozy Corner, Mark Zappa agent. Lambden, Inc., DBA, Mama Maria's Restaurante. Anna Marie Buhr agent. Seasons Tavern, BDC LLC, DBA, Seasons Tavern. Carol Reber's agent. And Zappa and Zappa, DBA, Muds and Suds, Mark Zappa agent, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
There you go, Colleen, second?
Second.
Is it okay for Mark to vote on this?
You already said I should abstain.
You better if you abstained. Very good, okay. All in favor of the motion, Colleen read, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
I abstain.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Now, Dan, there's only two short ones left, so you're going to get both of those if you don't mind.
That's fine.
All right, but we'll do them separately.
I move to approve the over the counter tobacco sales licenses for the village inn, Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, village liquor store and Freedom Value Center with an effective date of July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, as recommended by the village clerk.
Second.
Is that you, Mark?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Question or comment? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Got one more for you, Dan.
Uh, I move to approve the coin operated amusement license for Malaloo Inn, Stars Bar, the village inn, Seasons Tavern, Muds and Suds and Cozy Corner with an effective date of July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, as recommended by the village clerk.
Second.
All in favor, favor of the motion read by Dan, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you, Mark. I appreciate all the background information that is also presented to us, as it is each year, but this, if anyone has any questions down the road, it's a great resource.
And the alcohol licenses are also reviewed by the chief, please.
Yep. And there's a list there of, sort of a capsule shot of all of these establishments, too, so. Next one is the annual fireworks permit application submitted by our own Mark Zappa. And so I would ask for a, a motion from someone other than Mark to read that.
Move to approve the application for the fireworks paraphernalia sales permit for Mark Zappa, subject to approval from the north, or the appropriate Hudson Fire Department representatives and with the following conclusions. No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under eighteen years of age. Permit length to be July one, two thousand and eleven to June thirty, two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, Stan.
I'll second.
You'll notice that there's quite a bit of detail provided here also, including the fire inspection report. I'm sure you've had a chance to read that out. Any questions or comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
I abstain again.
Thank you, Mark. Gloria, the next item is for, I'll turn this one over to you. It has to do with ward redistricting plan for the village of North Hudson. Would you like to?
Sure.
Talk about that one?
As you may have already heard, the county is looking at the supervisory districts and decide, trying to divide them up evenly amongst the, the county supervisors. Part of that process filters down to the municipality. And we currently have six wards and our goal is to stay with the six wards, so the ward lines will be, be, are being adjusted at this time and a final plan map will be coming to the board on July
The July meeting.
Yeah, fifth meeting. For their final approval.
Want to talk about what you've gone through to get to where we are now?
Well, Becky and I met and, up at the county and Ellen Dunzer, the senior planner for the county, had a informational workshop and we learned how to use the state system to redraw lines and that's it so far. We didn't know when we made the agenda out, whether we were going to have a final for you tonight. We didn't really have control over the timeline, so as soon as they got it to us, which was just last week.
Yeah.
We started on our process, so we weren't able to give you something tonight as we had anticipated to approve.
Okay, thank you. Dan, anything from the plan commission?
Uh, we did not meet last month.
I would make a comment that plan commission will be meeting in June and one of the things that plan commission will be doing is reviewing the comprehensive plan and publishing an annual report. And potentially if there are some recommended changes to the comprehensive plan, would be bringing that forward to the board at a future time.
Thank you, Becky. Finance committee met a little while ago and see that there are some items on here for your edification and approval. One of them, and the first one happens to be item A, claims amount of a little over fifty-six thousand dollars, so I would ask someone to make a motion so that we can pay our bills.
Move to approve the May two thousand and eleven non-recurring claims totaling fifty-six thousand, thirty dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Uh, this does require a roll call vote, so Stan, you want to start us off?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Item B, resolution adopting a unreserved, undesignated fund policy. Gloria, I think we have, that's, this one, that was the extra sheet that was missing before?
No, it's this, this one here.
Oh, here we go, okay. Uh, resolution two thousand and eleven dash, zero eight. Regarding this policy, do you want to just give a brief overview? There's quite a bit of detail on the back of the actual resolution, but I'd like you to just talk on it a little bit.
Basically, sure. Basically, we'd like to start having some policies in place to guide the staff in preparing for budget and different items that they bring to board. So we kind of have those guidelines to know that we're within that for the board's approval. Part of the reason for this is it would help our credit standing when we go out for bonds or loans, that we actually have a written policy and that we stay between twenty and twenty-five percent of our annual our general fund budgeted expenses in proportion to our unreserved funds. What it does is it just gives us a, the reason it affects our credit is it shows that in, if there's a disaster or some unexplained expenses, that we could cover them for a short time. And it also helps me in the budget process. And what this will also do is it directs me to bring that information forward to the board during the budget process for any changes or considerations.
This is somewhat overdue, would you say, that we?
Yes.
And appreciate all the work that Gloria has put into this and so I would ask, is there, do we have a board member here who would like to read the resolution?
I will, George. Resolution number two thousand and eleven dash, zero eight, resolution adopting an unreserved, undesignated fund policy for the village of North Hudson. The Board of Trustees of the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin, at a meeting held this seventh day of June, two thousand and eleven, hereby adopts the following resolution. Whereas the village of North Hudson acknowledges that an adequate, undesigned fund balance is essential in maintaining the village's strong financial standing and whereas a healthy, undesigned fund balance provides evidence to the village's bondholders and bond rating agencies of, of financial stability and credit worthiness and whereas an undesigned fund balance can provide for capital expenditures, unanticipated mandatory expenses and one-time expenditures that do not create an ongoing financial obligation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the North Hudson Board of Trustees, acting as the municipal officers, adopts the attached, undesigned fund balance policy and is hereby put into full force and effect dated the seventh day of June, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
If you haven't already, I would encourage you to read very carefully the back of this document. Plothora of information. Any comments or questions before we vote?
Can I make a commentary?
Please do.
I would say, Tom Schumacher wrote an article about fund balances in one of our law alerts a couple of months ago, so if anybody wants further background on it, that might be a good place to go.
When you said this was overdue, George, this is a real quick aside. It hasn't happened recently and when it did happen, that I was experienced, there wasn't anything untoward about it, but it's a fund that can be manipulated. As indicated in the backside, if you read about the spike in taxes and that, so something like this is, ensures the financial stability of the village.
Yes.
At a very minimum.
Any comments about the document that we're about to approve?
I'll take that as a no.
That we're considering approving.
We're, yeah, that we're considering approving, okay. All right. Uh, this is a resolution, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Dan, would you like to start us off?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you. The next one was involved a some, a small expenditure, but it's something that is required. This is the public official bonds policy. Gloria, you want to talk about that one?
Basically, by state statute, we're required to have a bond held for the judge, the village treasurer and the village clerk. We do have a crime protection policy that covers all employees, which has a bigger limit of, it, it has a limit of fifty thousand and it also has some teeth as far as going after an employee, but basically, this is required by state statute and there's no way around it. We, we have to have those three.
It's pretty much the minimum that we.
It is. Fifty dollars is the minimum amount that they'll, they'll the minimum amount of premium and so for fifty thousand, or fifty dollars, you can get twenty-eight thousand of coverage for the, the judge and the clerk. And since the treasurer hand, has more access to money, fifty dollars only buys fifteen thousand dollar bond for the treasurer. So is more.
George, can I move to approve the purchase of bonds from Ohio Casualty Group, providing fifteen thousand coverage for the village treasurer, given her nature, and twenty-eight thousand coverage for the municipal judge and the village clerk at a cost of
Take that back.
Somebody quick second it. Was that you, Colleen?
Yep.
Could we leave out the?
Yeah, we can.
We can.
No cake for you ever again.
Too late.
Any questions or comments regarding this grand expenditure of a hundred and fifty dollars? The one comment that I would make here is just so that everybody knows, as a board member, you are covered under the crime prevention policy. Hope you do, hopefully you don't have to exercise that. What's that?
Yeah, geez, you don't.
Because this involves, involves an expenditure, albeit a hundred and fifty dollars, it'll take a roll call vote, starting with you this time, Stan?
Yes.
Klein, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The next one that appears before you is a document from the Excel company, Excel Energy. It seems that we have been getting off for, we don't know how many years, and neither does Excel Energy, with getting twenty-three extra streetlights that we hadn't been paying for. For those who aren't familiar with the process, Excel Energy charges us not using a meter, but rather by the pole, the light fixture and the type of light that's in it. So there's a variation of anywhere between thirteen and I believe it's sixteen dollars per month, per pole, depending on the type of light it is. They did an audit in two thousand and eight and even though Gloria followed up on that audit with saying, well, what are the results? They ignored us, as it were. And finally, last week or two weeks ago, came around and said, guess what, folks? You owe us nine thousand ninety-five dollars for the twenty-three poles that you haven't been billed for, but we're, and we're only going to charge you that nine thousand ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents only accounts for, you know, a rears of two years. Gloria did do a follow-up and found out from the PUC that that is legal, that they can go back two years and that we do in fact owe them for that time. The other piece to this is that from, starting with the June bill, we are paying for an additional twenty-three poles that we, herefore, we hadn't paid for. And there is an issue statement that's, was not in your binder, it was added just this evening. And so the finance committee did have a recommendation here. I will tell you, it was, was not unanimous to pay the nine thousand ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents in one shot, but that is our, Gloria's and my recommendation. Would you like to add, did I leave anything out, Gloria?
I guess the issue statement really clarifies that, that I, I'm recommending that we amend the two thousand and eleven annual budget by fourteen thousand five hundred. This will account for twenty-three hundred from June to December in two thousand and eleven and nine thousand ninety-five of unbilled streetlights and thirty-one oh five under, under budgeted in two thousand and eleven using unreserved. using unreserved funds. With the decrease in revenue that we are anticipating for two thousand twelve, it may not be advisable to spread any additional cost into those future years.
I move that the village administrator be authorized to amend the two thousand eleven budget by fourteen thousand five hundred dollars using unreserved funds.
I'll second that.
And maybe we better add to pay for the street lighting, um?
To pay for the?
Additional?
Um, nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars of unbilled streetlights, and the three thousand one hundred and five dollars owed, that was unbudgeted for two thousand eleven.
I think you meant nine thousand ninety-five dollars.
Nine thousand ninety-four. What'd they say again? Ninety-nine again?
Yeah, you had extra nine hundred dollars in there.
It's like, fourth time I've said it that way.
Gloria, do we need that, uh, this fourteen-five? Well, that, that'll cover that.
That'll cover, um, this year's amount.
I'm just talking about the seventy-six cents. Do you wanna add another dollar to that?
No.
Good.
Dan, are you okay with that amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Uh, this is a, any, first of all, any questions or comments regarding this? These are the things, folks, that, uh, we can anticipate. It, it makes budgeting very difficult when out of the clear blue, we get a bill for ninety-one hundred dollars. And the other thing that bothers me is that continued fee, uh?
Increase in fees.
An increase. Uh, I had almost, uh, when Gloria and I were meeting regarding this issue, I was almost half joking, we need to go to our neighbors and say, okay, if you want a streetlight, you're gonna have to pony up fourteen dollars a month. And, uh, there are actually some municipalities that have done that. I'm not suggesting we start that.
And just so you know, the, uh, Public Works, uh, Director and, or Staff will be verifying on the property or the boundaries to make sure that we're, they have accurate numbers, that, uh, they're not, we're not getting double-charged for something that's in, uh, St. Croix Electric or in Starwood, 'cause that's where some discrepancies happen, most of them.
So we will be verifying that before we pay the bill.
Correct.
As you probably know, every, every utility pole has a license plate, so it's easy enough to check.
Just wanted to make a comment that the motion that was made did not include, uh, the twenty-three hundred dollars?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, okay.
It included.
I knew you would catch that.
Amend the motion, and Colleen, you're okay with amending the motion to add the twenty-three? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the, uh, Excel bill? Spending, so this time, Dan, I'm gonna start with you.
Yes.
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 At the Finance Committee meeting, uh, let's see, oh, so we did get through that one. Okay, item E on here is, uh, soliciting loans for the St. Croix Station's street improvement project. During the, uh, Finance Committee, Darrell amended or changed that, uh, suggested motion to include five, ten, and fifteen-year, just for comparison. So, but I will still leave it to whoever would like to read this motion, whether or not to include, uh, five, ten, uh, along with the fifteen.
Do you wanna have Becky read, read Darrell's motion for whoever would like?
Well, we got it.
I'll start. I move that the village administrator be authorized to immediately solicit bids from local and state lending institutions for a loan to fund the St. Croix Station's street improvement project in the amount of not more than one hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars to rebe, be, and, let me, how do you phrase that?
It's all right, to be repaid in.
To, the solicit loans to be repaid in five years, comma, ten years, comma, or fifteen years. Loan will incorporate provisions for two loan payments per year, with the first payment due in March and the second September, and no prement, prepayment penalties.
Second.
Um, Becky, that's close enough to?
Darrell just had included the word op- options of five, ten, or fifteen years, so.
I'd say it's.
Intent is, you're basically the same.
Your reading is close enough. Any further discussion on this? Okay, Stan, you wanna start us off?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, George.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion passes. Couple more items on here. Public Works, uh, Stan, you wanna take this in Darrell's absence?
I wasn't there, Stan.
Just really quickly, George?
Yeah.
Were we not talking about item F under Finance?
Item F?
F.
Uh, no. The Finance Committee didn't.
Right, but I, the board has, still has the opportunity to, okay, we're just gonna skip that one for now. Thank you.
All right, um, Stan, you wanna talk a little bit about, uh, Public Works?
Uh?
You have a motion here.
We're gonna go? Uh, the Public Works Committee met on seventeen May at six P M. Uh, Chairman Stanford and Trustee Wacken in attendance. Uh, we discussed, or we approved minutes, uh, the St. Croix Station project was updated by Kevin Weem, uh, with Cedar Core. Uh, we had, uh, Catch Basin voted, there's a Catch, a storm sewer Catch Basin that needed repair on Tenth and Lund Street. Uh, I believe now that work has been completed, uh, Tenth and Lund? Oh, you're not on that one, but, yeah, the, the, uh, backhoe and stuff has been there, so that one, I believe, is done. Uh, request to connect municipal sewer, uh, parcel property owner at five thirty-sixth Street North to abandon the septic system and connect, uh, the, to the village sewer. Uh, Equa'd say this could be accomplished by connecting this stub located on Lund Circle. Uh, the information given committee, uh, there's no cost to the village. Uh, fire hydrant replacement at two thirty Monroe Street, uh, this has been sent to the insurance carrier. No further action was taken up. Uh, two thousand eleven sidewalk repair replacement project, uh, issue to be postponed for further meeting. Uh, Salt Shed was also postponed for future meeting. And, uh, the Public Works Superintendent is, uh, working on anticipated two thousand twelve budget. Engineer had no additional information, and the supervisors report, uh, had sent out a letter to the residents that are hooked up to municipal sewer located near the Liff Station, intersection of Galahad, road north, Wisconsin, informing them there have been a number of plugged pumps due to individuals flushing stuff down there that shouldn't be flushed. And, uh, it's been causing us some, uh, extra, uh, maintenance. So we, uh, asked that, uh, in the letter, that the residents refrain from throwing their stuff down there that's plugging up our pumps.
Is there one motion?
You got a motion there?
Do I have, uh, motion to approve the report?
No, no, we have a suggested motion to, um, re, next page.
Uh, oh, okay. Uh, suggested motion moved to have Zappa Brothers, Inc., replace Catch Basin, repair Tenth Street North and Lund Street North not to exceed forty-five ninety-eight.
Second, Lee.
Okay. All right, um, anybody have any questions about replacing the, uh, sound to be sinkhole?
Was there any more than one bid?
I don't believe there was. I mean, I'm.
Any follow-up to the question that?
I was just curious. I've only seen one. Is there a procurement policy that the village has that is, that we follow, or, I'm just learning here?
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, um, Mark Equa isn't here to speak on behalf of that process. And, um, as far, as far as the policy, no, I, would there, I don't have anything that is in writing that shows.
Okay.
Normally, it's, uh, we abide by state.
Stan, you'll have to refresh my memory on this. The project's done, and we're, has this been before the board before? The, the proposal was for some reason this one?
I've seen this month, last three months.
Yeah, so, but I mean, with, with, the part that is kind of glaring here is the project's done, and we're approving the?
Yeah.
The expend, and we're approving the bid. But I mean, and I don't remember.
This is the, this is.
I'm asking you to refresh my memory, too. I've seen this, these several times. We get.
I think that this is the second Catch Basin that's been in need of repair. So the one that you've seen previously was at a different intersection.
Yeah, there was, I know there's one at Eighth and Summer that's currently being fixed. Maybe that's the one.
That's the one I think that you're thinking of. So this.
All right. This is Lund Street, so it's, yeah, this is about three blocks away or something like that.
Yeah.
So I, I was mistaken, the, the one at, uh, Summer and, and, what, Eighth Street or whatever it is, is done. This is Tenth and Lund, so that, that's my mistake.
We don't have the bills for that yet.
Yep.
Do you know, did you remember seeing that? For the first one?
Yeah, I don't think we have received that.
Um, this will probably put us, um, at budget limit that was budgeted in that new storm, um, utility fund. So hopefully, there won't be any more this year.
Any other questions? Hey, Dan, you wanna start off on this, uh, roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Dan, you wanna talk about public safety? I see the chief is here, if there's?
Um, we went over, uh, the chief had a report on the COPS grant for getting another officer. If you wanna say more about it, I think it's a wonderful program that, uh?
May I use your microphone?
Should be looking into.
Uh, for the past two years, we've applied for the, uh, COPS grant, the community-oriented policing grant that's been out there, uh, started by President Obama two years ago. And, um, this will be our third application. The first two, the first, uh, there were several, I think four, in the state of Wisconsin who were, uh, who had earned that grant. It was all based on numbers. Uh, there really was not a, your typical grant process where you write narratives to explain an issue and problem and all those types of things. The second year of the grant basically took whoever applied the first year and was not, uh, granted an, an award, put them back in the pool as long as they were interested in it, and, uh, and then, and then those grants were given out. Again, we did not, uh, make the numbers cut based on our population and number of officers, any officers that were being laid off, those types of needs and concerns that they had. This year, it was a little bit different, that the, the narrative portion kind of came back in, and they opened it up again to anyone that wanted to apply. Um, it's the same process that we've talked about the past three year, or the past two years, where the grant would fund a hundred percent reimbursement for an officer for three years, followed by a fourth year committed to, by the village upon application. That the fourth year, the officer would be fully funded by the village, and then, basically, the fifth and subsequent years would be up to the village. They, they could let the officer go, uh, or continue to fund the officer in the fifth year, but three years fully paid for by the feds, uh, the fourth year paid for by the village, and then some decision would have to be made after that. Uh, application was made for that grant, May twenty-fifth, I believe it was. So I have no idea, and there was no information on when those awards would be, uh, announced. And I was, I'll talk a little bit more about that at the Public Safety meeting coming up on Thursday. But otherwise, the other, the rest of the meeting, uh, I guess for, for Dan's benefit, being a new committee member, really was orientation, uh, to our new chair, as well as to, uh, Trustee Ortner on, on a little bit more about the Police Department, how we've, um, I guess, communicated with the committee in the past, and some new, uh, changes that I think are gonna be beneficial going forward.
See, can I give a brief revisit, Dan's question about where the other bids were for this project? At this level, there weren't, you, you're not gonna see whatever, what other bids were there. Usually, it's whatever bid was accepted at the committee level will go to the board.
Okay.
Now, I can't say there were, I'm assuming there were other bids. A lot of times for this work, there's nobody interr- too interested in doing it. It's primarily just utility work. But at this, when we get to the board, if there has been some bids, the bid was approved at the Public Works Committee meeting, and then what the board is seeing is the, um, um, winning bid, if you will. And I have to think about it myself, it's such an automatic mechanism, I was going, it's a good question.
Thank you.
Where is that thing?
Well, the welfare is next. Mark, Dan, Stan, I wanna talk about the public welfare.
I don't, there was no meeting.
It was brief and to the point. But I have a feeling Colleen would like to address the board regarding, regarding the park board commission.
First, we did do some cleanup of the buckthorn in Webster Park. Um, myself and Mona from the park board, along with some teachers and family and kids from the elementary school, spent the day in the drizzle, cleaning it up. Um, we got a good start, but there's still a lot left. And it's just kind of the beginning process of trying to improve this park, um, along with the school, um, to make it, um, a little more user-friendly, and, um, to go along with the environmental, um, education for the elementary school. So it's really the school's kind of spearheading what they want done, um, and then, uh, we help them as we can. And then the other main thing is the, um, Chief Jansen Memorial Park dedication, which will take place on July sixteenth from eleven till one. Um, we're still working out the details of what all, we will be doing that day. Um, and we'll have a, you know, more updated plan and schedule, um, next month. We would, however, like to serve some refreshments, since it's, it's always nice to have something. And McDonald's will donate some punch to us, um, but require us to purchase a second container if we want more than one jugful. And then we're just looking at cookies, um, from, probably from Best Made in, um, uh, River Falls. So I'd like to move to approve the purchase of punch and cookies for the Chief Jansen Memorial Park dedication on July sixteenth, two thousand eleven, at a cost not to exceed fifty dollars.
Hmm.
Second.
Anybody on the board wanna talk about the, uh, well, the motion? All in favor of, oh, this is a financial item, so we need a roll call vote. Stan, you wanna start us off with the cookies and punch motion?
For Rich, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 We would, uh, we will have another, uh, board meeting prior to that July sixteenth gala fest. And we can talk more about it at that time, so. Do any other board members have anything that they would like to say before I adjourn this meeting? Mr. Zappa, is there something you would like to say?
Do adjourn?
Second.
Let the record show, the meeting adjourned at eight-ten.